I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 7th, 2021 special council meeting to order. Would you like to all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have a clerk for who called roll. Okay, I will call roll. Dan Emperson?
Here.
Dominic Gatlin?
Here.
Rodney Palmond?
And present on Zoom from beautiful Fort Polk, Louisiana.
Oh, welcome. Diane Ratten? Right here. And we have our counsel Sophie on the phone, correct, or on Zoom? I see you on the screen.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, and Mayor Rhodes is present. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mom, favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to call roll?
They gave the roll call vote because of the fact that Rodney's appearing via Zoom.
Okay, okay. Dan Emperson?
Aye.
Dominic, aye. Rodney Palmond?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes?
Aye. Aye, have it.
Okay, closed session items. We had one item added. The first one is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency negotiator Michael Rock in term city manager, employee organization Ione Police Officers Association. Second item, public employee performance review interim city manager pursuant to government code 54957.9. Third one, public employee performance review, city attorney pursuant to government code 54957.9. Third one, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of section 54956.9 of the government code for cases. And the last one is pursuant to government code section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator, property 17 East Main Street, APN 004 dash zero, excuse me, 101 dash 006. Agency negotiator for Michael Rock interim city manager and negotiating parties Wayne Moore, property owner. We will now go into public, excuse me, comment, we have any public comment on closed session? We have one person coming up.
Is the bathroom on back open? We were told we're not allowed to use these anymore.
Why can't you use the bathrooms?
No, they can't. You can use the bathroom in the hallway.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood when they said no when they closed the door.
No, the other, we can close the other door that's in front.
Okay.
Oh, God, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? Close public comment? We will go into closed session and return around six.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. More kidney stones, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Evans.
Well, if you're gonna be able to get through there, Dominic.
All right, we're back from closed session. Information was received, direction was given. We paused halfway through, so we're gonna continue with closed session after the normal meeting. So with that said.
Please let the record reflect that Diane Ratten did attend the special meeting, arrived at 6:53.
5:53. 5:53.
Five, I'm sorry, 5:53.
Okay, so we will start.
Reced.
Reced the special meeting and we'll start regular. So with that said, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, December 7th, 2021 regular city council meeting. I'll take roll again, I guess. Dan Emperson?
Here.
Dominic Gatlin?
Here.
Diane Ratten?
Here.
Rodney Palmond?
Present from beautiful Fort Polk.
And myself, Mayor Stacy Rhodes is here. Will you all stand, join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna get approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
We'll do the roll call, I guess. Dan Emperson?
Aye.
Dominic Gatlin?
Aye.
Diane Ratten?
Here. Aye.
Rodney, Rodney Palmond?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes, aye. Aye, have it. We have no presentations or announcements. Public comment, we have any public comment that's not on the agenda?
Thank you and good evening. Today on the website next door, which I know some of the council likes to use as a means to disseminate information. The biggest topic today was a friend of someone on the city council said that according to this member of the city council, Ione was planning to tear down the horse arena to build more parking. I know the Brown Act does not allow you to make detailed comment, but could I go around the board and just ask, is there any truth to that?
You can ask me, absolutely.
It's next door, I don't know. I don't get on that.
You do not have to respond, this is public comment, this is not a type of question asking.
That's why I asked, if anyone would like to.
Wasn't great. I haven't been on there in months.
Okay, I see four shaking heads, so I can post on there and say that at the meeting, the question was asked, and as of right now, there are no plans to tear down the arena for more parking. Okay, thank you.
What's the comment answer, ring our, got anyone on Zoom shocking?
Is there any truth to the rumor?
No.
Okay, well, you will use public comment. We will move on to the consent calendar. We get approval for the consent calendar.
So moved?
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll call roll. Dan Emperson?
Aye.
Dominic Gatlin?
Aye. Sorry.
Diane Ratten?
Aye.
Rodney Palmond?
Aye.
And then Mayor Rhodes, aye. Aye, have it. We have no public hearing. Item five, consider approval agreement with West Coast, West Yost to provide engineering design services for the waste and tertiary treatment plant interconnection piping project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Back in May of this year, the council approved an RFP to be released for the design of improvements associated with wastewater treatment plant headworks project, replacement, as well as the interconnection between the wastewater treatment plant and the tertiary plant. We had one responsible bid. It was from West Yost. The most important urgent project is to do the interconnect. It's my recommendation that we do that project first as a separate project from the headworks project. In February of next year, according to the Regional Water Policy Control Board and others, there will be a significant amount of grants, grant money is available for projects exactly like the headworks project. And is the intent at that point to apply for that grant, hopefully fund that project, come back to you for design engineering of that project at a later date, and then hopefully construction. So this is just for the air connect. We will be back at the city council meeting soon with a separate special agreement to update the WDR permit for the wastewater treatment plant. That has to be done. There are a number of issues that need to be updated, but we felt that that needed to be done separately so that we can expedite, so we can keep this project moving and not slow it down by combining it with other projects. So this is a standalone for the interconnect. It's largely, the price tag is contingent upon a lot of things. First of all, that we actually can make the connections that we need to make and get permission from various agencies to do that. And secondly, that everything is where we think it is. And that, you know, we have to go through the engineering process and the soils and all the other investigations that need to be done to make sure that it works. And this is an estimate, so it could be less in terms of the amount of time that's needed for meetings and coordination. I'm fairly hopeful that it won't, it's a not to exceed contract, so they cannot spend more without coming back to the city council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is about the third meeting I've been in about the interconnection project, let's call it. And I find it very odd that even the last time, we had an attorney in the audience on a totally different subject, that even got the said, the pipe has already existed, it's always been interconnected. And it was last used in 97 when it was, the sewer plant was being well overtaken. All they did was put the pumps and the drop inlet on pond four, because that's where all the ponds connect. And that's all that needs to be done. The pipe is already connected to the tertiary. Anyone that understands what goes on down there knows it's already done. I don't know why they want to try and hook into the Woodward bottom pipeline, which I think was illegally installed anyhow. But I don't still understand why this interconnection is a big deal when it's already interconnected. And when we were trying to fix the golf course's water issues, and we were over there looking at the well project, that's what was gonna happen, if that well was gonna make enough water, we were gonna go to that drop inlet and hook to that pipe, which goes directly to the tertiary plant. So I don't know if anyone's looked at that again, I don't know why this, no one ever brings this up that works for the city, because the city workers should know it's there. And if you wanna know who the attorney was, it was Tom Sweat. Tom Sweat was the one that physically hooked it up last time. It was for a temporary emergency reason, but the pipe is, it's there, it's been there. And it's way big enough, it's a 10-inch line, so. That's my.
Is that a technical question?
Yes, no, that's a statement.
Which I hope they figure that out before they spend too much money trying to find it.
Oh, your turn.
Oh, no, I was just gonna, I don't have any technical questions, so.
I gotta follow up with that, I mean, I keep hearing that the pipe's already there, I think there's the ARSA pipes there. And I think it's good to have this so that I can be answered once and for all, because I've heard that the pipe's there. I felt there, I went out there today, and there's, you know, there's the ARSA pipe. You can go backwards on the ARSA pipe with the right valving has, has been done. And then you've got, you know, the Brubeck pipe, and you've got a water pipe, and you've got a sanitary sewer pipe. So, you know, I think, you know, within an hour, that'll be put to rest, I mean, there is a pipe there, but I think what you're thinking about is the ARSA pipe, so.
Correct, it's when ARSA would send too much water, they have to deflect from the tertiary to sewer. Right. And then when the emergency in 97, they used it backwards.
Yeah, that's true.
Anything?
No.
Rodney, you got any input, questions?
Technical?
No.
Okay. We'll open a public comment, any public comment?
Should be five here, so share the pain. What you have in front of you are drawings of the Five Mile Drive Bridge. Birds eye view from the top. Little yellow highlights of what Mr. Atlin was talking about on the lower right of the 12-inch sewer. That belongs to you, the city of Ione, it is sealed off and unused. 10-inch water, apparently on my admiral water, sealed off and unused. I like to point out that in the 80s or 90s, somebody put another 10- or 12-inch metal line on the lower portion of the bridge. Okay, well, that's fine. If the bridge, if the pipe that you're talking about using, and I think it is, is that white pipe that's on the up end of the bridge, I highly caution you against that. I've had two people who make their living contracting, and they say that pipe has already been out in the sun too long, and it's already probably started to degrade. Now, that's all well and good, I don't believe you need, you don't want to use that pipe. Again, you've already gotten one that you put in years ago that, it's a matter of a few hundred yards maybe, rather than doing this huge project that you're looking at. But anyway, at the end of the day, you've got four empty pipes on that bridge, because people like you, as well-meaning as they may have been, don't know what has been going on before. Now, let me just clarify, that plastic pipe was not on the upper end of that bridge in 97 during the high water. They did not attach the pipe so much to the bridge as they suspended it. The metal one on the lower part has like beams that come out and triangular braces, and it's protected by the bridge. They installed the plastic pipe just a few inches below the deck of the bridge. So if we have another event like we did in 97, not so much the water, but it picks up whole trees. They bounce around, and these huge roots go six, eight feet up in the air, and it slams against that bridge. I have seen this happen, and when it happens again, if you're using this harebrained scheme, I'm sorry, but this is expensive, and it's, I don't know why it keeps coming back. But if you continue to do this, not only do you create a environmental problem by dumping all your sewage in Sutter Creek, you shut down your production of your wastewater. This plan is insane and expensive. And with that in mind, since I have seen this myself, I want you to understand. You can spend all the money on plans that you want. But if one, if we, as soon as we figure out that you're actually going to move on this, expect to be confronted legally, okay? Can I answer any questions?
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hold on, Dave, we got someone coming to the podium.
Yep. I believe what he said is right, because I've been here a long time, and I've seen trees floating by my house actually smack the bridge down here, and it'd take that pipe right out with no split at all. And I, I just, I know you wanna hook this up, because you know the 218, you wanna raise the sewer race, it won't happen, because of 218, because you have no hookup to that tertiary plant. You've been siphoning along our capital improvement fund of about $660,000 since 213, and you people don't seem to get that, or you don't want to hear it, thank you.
Okay, Dave Anderson, I saw you on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Stacy. I have a few comments regarding the proposed agreement with West Yost about the interconnection project. First, it remains unclear to me that the proposed alignment only involves CDCR and in no way affects ARSA. On May 21st, 2021, in the RFP for the headworks upgrade, interconnection project, and the irrigation well project, it states, quote, "Just to note, this line is currently configured with valving to allow water from Neal Creek State Prison and Ambler Regional Sanitary Authority to go either to the Castle Oaks Water Reclamation Plant or the Wastewater Treatment Plant," unquote. "If this is in any way part or parcel of the effort to negotiate a long-term agreement with CDCR, then any effort must include ARSA. This city council has been advised repeatedly of hazards and liabilities associated with use of the CDCR ethylene. The Regional Water Quality Control Board has advised you of exposure liabilities for the continued use of ethylene contaminated with hazardous materials as early as May of this year. It is confounding to understand why the city and your public work superintendent don't take advantage of existing pipelines owned exclusively by the city, available for the very purpose this contract proposal seeks to implement. Also, as part of the RFP approved in May, an irrigation well is proposed to be installed in the same location as the sump, also labeled as the Stock Pond in the Dexter Wilson Water Balance Report. The proposed irrigation well has an estimated budget of $296,000 with a goal of producing a well at 1,250 gallons per minute. The sump has already had a $65,000 pump installed under Ed Patterson's direction, and has produced at least 800 gallons per minute in an effort to determine possible production capacity. For city staff to propose a well as a contingency to make up for irrigation needs when 1,250 gallons per minute represents almost two acre feet per day seems excessive. The golf course claims a demand of 450 acre feet per year, yet even with reduced flows during 2021, irrigation water was accumulating in Neal Creek. As part of this discussion, the city public's work superintendent claimed the use of the sump required approval by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is factually untrue. In short, the irrigation well aspect of this project fails to meet reasonable engineering goals, and staff's representations and narrow-minded views undermines any confidence in a well-planned and administered project. Thanks."
Thank you, David. We got any other one on Zoom?
No.
No. Okay, we'll close public comment. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the item as Stacy.
Second.
All right, we have any other?
No, we have discussion. Yeah, I mean, for public comments and staff, it's pretty obvious that we don't really know the condition or quality of the piping, so whether it's usable or not, we'll determine that, and we'll figure out if we need to replace it or not, and we'll put a pipe in that meets the city standards and is in compliance with the Regional Water Policy Control Board.
Does the scope of the project, because I looked at this project scope, and it said nothing about looking about lines already there or whatnot, but I'm guessing, I'm hoping that it's going to do that.
Michael, have you had conversations with the wastewater operator, as well as our public work superintendent about what pipes are on that bridge? What pipes are, are usable for this project?
Yes.
And what other things are necessary if we do go to this existing pipe? We would, my understanding is we would also need to have a pump house put in in an area that we do not have any room for it, is that a fair statement?
Yes. In the scope of work under attachment A, West Yost would confirm that the existing 12-inch pipeline, which is currently owned and operated by CDCR, is suitable. They will also confirm existing secondary ethylene pumps are configured properly. They'll determine a preliminary alignment. We're going to do whatever is the easiest path and the least resistance and the most economical. We have plans of the bridge with pipes on the interior. There's a sewer line that comes from the Castle Oaks live station that goes to the headworks. There's an AWA water line that runs through the bridge, and there's an ARSA line on the outside of the bridge. And then there's a brand-new Woodward bottom line on the uphill side of the bridge. There are no other pipes. There's one open slot in the bridge for a new pipe, but there are no pipes in place.
And while you refer to the ARSA pipe as ARSA, it is actually the property of the city of Ione, not ARSA, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Might as well, thank you.
And that ARSA line too, I mean, I mean, that was, we use that for overflow, I believe, when we have emergencies, is that what you understand?
Yes. So again, this is a not to exceed, it doesn't mean we won't find an easier solution, and we certainly hope to.
And it does say that the funds would be, can be moved based on the scope of work and based on what they find during the investigative part of this process.
Yes.
There's always something, I mean, it's, hopefully it goes less, doesn't seem very often, but it's possible.
Never.
It's just native bees, though. Also, I don't know what they are, materials, et cetera.
You got any input, Rodney? Mr. Palmond?
Yeah, I'm just listening to everything, and it's, yeah, it's just, you know, I'm sure as part of the project to go and inspect them pipes and make sure everything, like Michael said, is going to be suitable for use and not to be replaced with everything that's, you know, up to code and up to standard. I understand that that C900 that's hanging there and exactly what its function is and what its longevity is, as far as, you know, being exposed to sun and out there where it's at. And it's not quite as dramatic as being made out to be, but I'm sure that as part of the project, they're gonna look at everything that's up to speed in Cozierwood, state of California, so.
Okay. I might make a note too, I know, Michael, I assume they'll look at, like, because there is an issue with debris coming down that creek on flood events, and figure that out, I don't know, pretty good side, Beaver Dam right down there, I think. Okay, thank you. It's all in.
Okay.
One more question, the funds, some of the funds for this, those coming from the ARPA fund, or grant, is that, or are these straight from, are there any ARPA funds being utilized for this?
No, this is coming out of the Sewer Capital Improvement Project Fund 3121.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we want to put it to a vote. Okay, Dan Emperson?
Aye.
Dominic Gatlin?
Aye.
Diane Ratten?
Aye.
Rodney Palmond?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes, aye. Aye's have it. Moving on to item six.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This item is a request to adjust the salary range for the finance manager position. The position, based on our salary survey that we just concluded, is significantly below competitive jurisdictions. And we do need to recruit for the position, and at the current salary of a top step of $84,000, our recruitment efforts will be extraordinarily difficult. So we are requesting that the new salary range be $84,000 to $102,000 for base salary plus benefits. It is a significant increase. It is also an extremely important position in the city. And this individual is responsible for upwards of $5 to $6 million a year in financial transactions, both payroll accounts payable and receivable. So is this somebody that you want to pay adequately, and that you can trust, and that is professional, and can do an excellent job? And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. This is going to be a difficult recruitment even at this new salary range.
What do we currently pick, we have a temporary one right now, right?
Well, she's on a, she's a consultant who works very limited hours, so it's hard to compare them.
Right, right, what are we paying her?
We are paying her an hourly rate. It really depends how many hours a week she works. So some weeks, some months she's making $5,000 a month, other months $10,000. It really just depends on how many hours, and it just changes every, every month.
Okay.
Is that a person who did that?
She is. She is.
Okay. So that's, that's a straight pay? It's not like?
It's straight pay, no benefits, no medical, no nothing, so, yeah. All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment? Anyone on Zoom? I see no one on Zoom. We'll close public comment. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the salary range adjustment for the finance manager position.
Second.
A second.
Okay. All right, any more discussion?
No, it's a big step. I mean, I guess we'll see with his yields. I know sometimes, you know, sometimes we've got a lot of applicants for different positions, but it seems like the labor market right now is extremely tough, so I don't know what else to do. As, I get, I assume it's DOQ as well, too. If you've got somebody fully qualified, they get a little bit better. If they're not so qualified, then we pay them a little less. I assume that's always going to go down.
Usually.
Yeah.
We are going to update the job spec, and we'll bring it back to you for approval later, but we, the current job spec's actually pretty good. We just need to tweak it a little bit.
What are the, what are the education requirements? I'm sorry to want to jump you off topic.
I strongly feel that this position needs to have a bachelor's degree at a bare minimum.
Would that be accountant? Would that have any other certificates?
It would be highly desirable that this individual be a CPA or have at least an accounting degree.
Okay. And then, and then as far as any of the requirements going down the road, I mean, sometimes we hire people that are a little less, and we can get them up to this standard. That's what, that's what, wait and see what, who shows up, I guess.
Yeah.
The current requires a bachelor's degree, so.
But not, but not a CPA.
Be highly desirable.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I get it. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Michael's, Rodney, is there any way, I know it's highly desirable that they be a CPA, is there any way we can write that in? Is a higher starting way to be a CPA or not?
Oh, absolutely. That discretion is already allowed in the city rules and regulations, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pointing with the two is always, we actually hire someone with the right credentials, because we have the habit of putting this out there, then we hire someone that don't fit, and then they're stuck in there, so.
Correct. Yeah, my word, we'll hire a qualified candidate.
We will. Thank you.
Okay, we'll put it to a vote. Dan Epperson?
Aye.
Tom McAtlin?
Aye.
Diane Ratten?
Aye.
Raleigh Pumondon?
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Aye's added. Moving on to item seven, consider adopting resolution direction and preparation of interim guidance rules and regulations to implement SB9, the California Home Act, and directing the preparation of SB9 implementing ordinance. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you are aware, SB9 was passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, takes effect on January 1st of 2022, and we are here tonight in advance of that in order to protect the city's flexibility, interest, and rights when it comes to local control of our own zoning and our own general plan. So the law says that we must act before January 1st, 2022, if we want to have an ordinance in place that specifically speaks to the city of Ione, and, and we have to meet, still meet the requirements of SB9. But there are certain things we can do by local ordinance that would lessen the impact of SB9. So the first step is tonight, which is to direct staff to create guidance rules and regulations that will ultimately then turn into an ordinance. Ordinances take a long time, and we only have till December 31st, so we're asking the council tonight to direct staff to create interim guidance rules and regulations to implement SB9, and then to direct the ultimate preparation of an SB9 implementing ordinance, which we'll come back to you next year with. There's a pretty long and complicated set of information that I gave you here. The bottom line is, we're concerned about splitting lots and getting into a situation where those lots are so small that there is major congestion in terms of parking, in terms of livability, in terms of building codes, in terms of public health codes, and all the things that are associated with very dense zoning. These zones were not designed for this. These zones were designed for single-family zoning. So I understand the state's desire for affordable housing. That is going to continue to be an extraordinarily difficult goal in California. We do have a possible multifamily project that may come before the council. That would be a huge help in terms of affordable housing. So they're already doing their due diligence. They're moving forward, and that could be over 200 units of affordable housing, multifamily housing. So hopefully that helps lessen the need for this sort of decision-making, where you start splitting single-family lots into four lots, and that's really, it does affect the quality of life and lots of other issues for law enforcement, code enforcement, and on down the line. So this is step one, just putting together the guidance rules, then we'll come back to you next year with an ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is the same thing we, we did before, right? Then our last year's governor overruled it, right?
Well, you, the council voted to oppose SB9, which we did. In fact, almost every city did, and the governor signed it anyway.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, this is one of those things where it's a really small name, but the impacts, I mean, like everything else they passed down there, I mean, what, what options do we have? I mean, really, because I mean, this is, I mean, it's not going to, I mean, I know it's not going to affect us probably tremendously, but it's like a lot of these things they pass, and the people are designed to help, they actually are destroying them. That's what it's going to do. I mean, it's.
Well, and SB9 has no requirement for low-income housing, so it's not even designed for, you know, affordable housing. It's only designed to create more houses at the current cost of the homes, so it's not even helpful.
Well, it's, it's just, it's exactly the opposite of what they're trying to do. I mean, it's like everything else they pass, it just increases the burden on the builder, which is passed on to the owner. And then now you're going to do this, and we've got all these streets and, you know, I talked to our law enforcement, I mean, it's, you know, it could, I mean, for us, it's not quite my great a ton of headaches. I can't imagine being in a large city and having your neighbor tear down their old house and putting, you know, condos of junk right in them. I mean, it's, it's going to be a nightmare in some places I could proceed to do that, but homelessness, I won't rant much farther, but this is, homelessness is a problem, but this, I doubt we'll do much to solve it. I mean, we've lost 140,000 residents. We still have a homeless crisis? I mean, really? Anyway, I'll say rest my comments for debate.
Yeah, so I understand, and page three of this document talks about what the city can do in an ordinance to lessen the impact of SB9, you know, making sure there are easements, making sure that there's parcels have access to adjoining public rights away, that there's adequate off-street parking, that, you know, so these are things that we can do to make sure that SB9 isn't overly burdensome to how single-family zoning was ultimately, you know, supposed to, to function. The main thing is that that control stays with the city and not the state. SB9 allows for ministerial administrative decision-making. In other words, nothing going through the planning commission, and this ordinance would restrict some of those pieces of SB9. So it does help.
Part of that, I was going to ask too, so I know some of the requirements are, is a half-mile walking distance of high-quality transit corridor? I mean, do we have that in Ione? I mean, we have, I mean, in reality, is there any place you'd access would actually apply to Ione? I mean, I don't know. That's the thing. I mean, it's like a little, little bureaucracy, which has got a bunch, bunch of money probably allocated that might not even apply. I mean, I was reading through the require the following, like, well, yeah, we got a bunch of bus routes, and I'm on that commission too, but it's like, I don't think we are.
Right.
I mean, this seems like there's not much of Ione, this is actually not going to act correctly. I don't think it can, just because of the restrictions that are.
That's true. The, the real overriding reason to ultimately adopt the ordinance is to keep that decision-making locally, so that you are not subjected to the whims of the state, then, and the state could then change the rules later on down the road, and if you didn't have an ordinance in place, you'd be subjected to whatever rules the state decides. There are cities that already beat a lot of this. They're called illegal second units. They're called lots of names, some of which are not appropriate for tonight, but those cities that have those illegal second units, or granny flats, or whatever you want to call them, there are a host of problems that go with that. I worked in one of those cities. There was no parking, people living in garages, without adequate sewer and water connections, without adequate heat and air conditioning, and that's what you don't want. And that's where you want the local control. I think we're all the same. Any other technical question? I'll open up a public comment. Any public comment on this? Okay, we're on Zoom. We got Mr. Custer. I see your hand. There you go. Unmuting him, Jones. Is he muted, or she doesn't want to even ask?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Earl.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think the council took action in this, was it a month or two ago? And I thought that they were in favor, but maybe it was in favor of the opposite of what has resulted. And I remember sharing that, my view that expanding lots and expanding the number of structures of a lot would probably be lowering property values. But I was just wondering if there's a way, well, what the, if the law asks for local action and local ordinances, how much leeway is there that will, you know, kind of ameliorate the effects, especially in smaller cities?
Not a lot, honestly. SB9 has passed. What you were referring to was our prior discussion of opposing SB9, which we did, but the governor has passed it anyway.
Yes.
So the, our ability to mitigate and insulate ourselves from SB9 is, is not great, but whatever we can do to do so, I firmly believe we should.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to share that I have looked at a number of things that the council's been doing this year, and I wanted to share that with respect to a number of actions, I really feel that the entire council deserves accolades for this year. As we come to the end of the year, really dealing with some difficult issues, the sewer and the water pipelines across Saddle Creek, you know, the property utilities, the waste problems from Neal Creek, and without much help from corrections. So I really feel that this particular council's been doing a good job. It was difficult, especially with respect to the recalls, and I, I don't like recalls. I don't like, unless they have great merit, like the one against Gavin Newsom. So anyway, I feel that something I mentioned last April, when, when the historic Preston proposal for Veterans Academy was not immediately accepted, I think I might have said something like, well, has this council lost its way? I might have said something like that in an article. And I just wanted to share that definitely this council has found its way, and I really appreciate it, and especially during this time of year. I would really like to share that I hope that everyone has a really pleasant Christmas time and a terrific new year. And all that attend these meetings and their families, please have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Earl.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Any other public comment? Closing public comment? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we consider that we adopt the resolution directing the preparation of interim guidelines, rules, and regulations to implement SB9, California Home Act, and directing the preparation of an SB9 implementing ordinance.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Michael, do we have a resolution number on this one? Just out of curiosity, I didn't see it. Got it somewhere, but not that it's super important, I just wanted to record if we did.
We do not. Sorry, the city clerk is quite ill.
That's fine. Okay. No, I mean, I think if you look at it, like I say, it really won't affect us a ton, but we do need to move on it so we can retain what control we can have. Most of the restrictions are, if we actually pursue ordinances, and, you know, there would be a lot of things to fix around here, but it would be, not because of the infrastructure, I don't think. Thank you. Fly out.
Well, the tender coming out of the governor's office right now is that there is going to be some enforcement of the house, housing requirements, and, and they've put together a task force that is, doesn't currently have penalization rights, but give them a minute. They will certainly make that adjustment as necessary. So I think we need to be vigilant in making sure that we can maintain as much control as we possibly can at the local level. They don't, the governor's office doesn't look at Ione versus LA. They just look at them as one entity, and there's no way we can be lumped together with all of the other larger cities and expect to be, you know, maintain whatever control we can.
Well, I think too, with the department, if that project goes forward, it will alleviate all this anyway. It will be way off the map, and we'll, we'll have plenty of more affordable housing. Which, affordable housing, of course, I never read anything, like, was it 340,000 a house or something like that? That's affordable in California right now. That's the, that's the lower threshold.
That's the lower end.
Yeah. Yeah, imagine that.
Any input, Tom?
Nope.
Rodney?
Not much. It's just, I think we're all in agreeance that just an attempt at bigger government trying to squash smaller, so. That's it.
And I just want to add that for the public, there is a proposition that's being circulated to repeal SB9. I would certainly recommend you go online, find it, sign it, and let's at least try to check some of this overreach of the governor's office.
Okay, let's put it to a vote. Dan Epperson?
Aye.
Tom McAtlin?
Aye.
Diane Ratten?
Aye.
Rodney Pumondon?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes says aye.
Aye's added.
Just make sure you put a resolution number.
Yeah, they'll all get numbers.
Moving on to item eight, set date for town hall meeting on January 22. Yes, thank you. The previous council meetings, we've discussed a town hall type meeting. There are a number of issues that I know the council would like to have the community have an opportunity to address and talk about and give us their input. One of those is the Preston youth facility property. It is for sale by the state. They're asking for conceptual proposals. It's a very complex type of purchase if somebody buys it. So the state's looking for a conceptual development proposal project. What would that look like? That's one item. Another item is simply to help the council set the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. We're already halfway through this fiscal year. Get input from the public on the top priorities the public has for overall city services. And then just an opportunity for the public to, to actually have public comments and actually be able to talk back and forth with them outside the constraints of this very professional business meeting that we have every two weeks. I had sent the council some dates of when you might be available, and I'm just trying to nail down an exact date that we could then publicize and get out there so that, and we would do it at EBL. And I believe that some of you were available on, I think one of the dates was January 10th, if I recall correctly. That was a Monday. That was a Monday. Is there a particular date that might work? Rodney, are you available on a certain date?
I would be available, I would be back, I'll be back from here in a few days, and then I'm out of town the weekend prior to that, but I'd be home on that Monday at the 10th for sure.
Okay. Whatever works for Rodney, I think it would work around here. January 10th.
But I do appreciate you, I'll be flexible with my schedule.
You're worth it.
Do you really want to do it on a Monday, though? Everybody hates Mondays.
That be it said, Michael, I'm home that whole entire week.
Okay.
I'm out of town at seven, eight, and nine, and I'm back that whole next week.
Well, we could do it on, no, we can't do it on Tuesday.
I'm fine with Monday if you want to do it, but.
12? I mean, I think the other option was that, I mean, if we do it later, I have more time to put it together, so I'm certainly in favor of the 12.
I can't do the 12, I'm home.
Okay.
What about that Friday?
That's way better than Monday.
No, we can't do it on Friday, no one will show up.
Nobody's gonna show up, unless you're serving beer.
That's TGI, I can't do that.
That's a non.
I think that Wednesday, the 12th, sounds pretty good. It's right in the middle of the week, and it's part of the business week, and.
Are you here, Claire, Tim? I'm here, I just have a church, I'll get the kids.
The 12th is no good?
Nothing at all.
Oh, okay.
Let's do the Monday.
Monday is 10th. All right.
Kick off the week right.
Town hall meeting. All right, I'll get it going. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment on it?
Stacy?
Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question for Michael. You made reference to the Preston RFP the state's putting out, and I had asked Janice if she could find that for me, and she asked you about it.
That's off-topic, Dave, we need to maybe.
Well, he brought it up, and so I was just asking, is there an RFP and where can I find it?
I can send it to you, that's fine, no problem.
And it is on the state site?
Yeah, yeah. It's due next month, so that's the other interesting part of this.
Yeah, closes on the 22nd of January.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when you say state site, I went to Journal Services and I couldn't find it, so I'm not sure.
I'll send it to you. I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's a PDF document, it's not a problem.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment? Mr. Royal? Your hands up.
Yes, thank you. I just want to share that we really would like to cooperate and share a little bit further about our plan. I think a lot of it might have been misunderstood for historic Preston and the low-cost housing, especially for student residents of the academy that we're planning on. So it's a matter of understanding step by step, and in conversations with, actually a couple of people with the governor's office, they have definitely asked that we connect with local government, city or county, in terms of presenting this plan. So we definitely would really like to be involved and with a committee of council members, and anyone that is gonna be working on that problem, that issue. Thank you very much.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public comment. Someone wanna make a motion?
Oh, we need to begin.
Just give your action.
Direction's fine, we're just setting the date for January 10th, and I believe everyone will be present. Okay.
Good.
Okay.
All right, moving on to reports and communications from city manager.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay. Council comments, committee reports, and future agenda items, Mr. Epperson?
Just two things, Akron meets tomorrow, one at the county chambers. I also have been talking to a guy who's interested in restarting the BMX track, and we'll talk more about that later, but he was just asking about where the status of it is, just to people, if there's interest out there, that there's at least one person who's interested, his kids are involved in the sport and are interested in getting it going, and so it's all I have.
I sent some grant information to Parks, Forests, particularly for BMX.
Okay, great. Mr. Atlin, you ready?
Just for a future agenda item, we got that email from the regional board saying that they're gonna have a Zoom meeting on the 15th, and I was wondering if we could have a Zoom meeting on the 15th here in chambers, I think it would be real beneficial for everybody.
And that was, what was the start time? Was it?
Five o'clock.
Five?
Five to seven, I believe.
Five to seven. So John is present, Sergeant Alfred is here, and we would like to open up the council chambers for the public to attend that meeting through Zoom. They're not doing an in-person meeting, the whole thing is being done through Zoom, but it'd be great if we could have this facility open that evening.
We could do that.
Okay, great.
Rodney, you got anything?
No, sir.
Not yet?
Not right yet. Nope.
Two things, we had Parks and Rec, and back to Jim's comment, I was not on Neighborhood Watch or whatever, but yes, the horse track did come up, and it was a very heavily disgusted thing, and there are some things being done. The Howard family has been contacted, so, and Historic Societies are coming out and would work on it, so they're gonna try and protect it. The other thing is, I got an interesting email from some that work for Caltrans, and they were told that the entrance to Wildflower is suspended now until better weather, and I believe our agreement with them was it had to be connected and actually functional by a certain date. Is it actually suspended? I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if you do, and I thought it was odd that a Caltrans guy called me up and asked me what was going on with it. Because right now, even if it's abandoned the way it is, there's no striping on it or anything, there's at least striping.
There's no pavement there.
Well, the highway itself is not finished.
I got that email, and I forwarded it to Public Works with Mike Rock, so I don't know what the answer is, but I did forward it to.
Well, the answer is it has to be over 55 degrees and not raining in order to pour asphalt, and you can't do striping in wet weather either. It's just a weather issue, they'll get it done.
Okay, so it's not gonna conflict with Thomas's.
I don't believe so.
Shut them down or nothing.
Okay.
No.
Okay, and that's all I had. Yeah. So, okay, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular council?
Hold on one second, point of order. Do we have to adjourn till the 15th, Mr. Rock? Is that gonna be a council meeting?
It's the 21st.
No, the Zoom meeting, because we're all gonna be together, so we have to adjourn there to satisfy Brown Act.
You know, last time we adjourned the regular meeting, and then when we came back out, we reported out and adjourned the special. How we, where's Sophie? Sophie, are you there?
We're essentially gonna have a special meeting.
How did we do this last time? Do you remember?
I think, I think what Dominic is asking about is the meeting on the 15th needs to be a properly agenda, a special meeting if you're all going to appear and attend. So James will have to post an agenda for that day, he'll have to open the meeting, and then you guys can all participate on the 15th. As far as today goes.
Okay, I think.
The regular meeting.
Okay. You mean the Water Board meeting? Or the town hall?
The regional board meeting on the 15th, that we are gonna.
December 15th.
Correct.
That's a public meeting, anybody can go to that.
But we're gonna go as a body, so.
Doesn't matter, it's not your meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're.
You can all attend public meetings.
It's already posted by the state as a public meeting under the Brown Act.
Send someone, the memo in to Mr. Scali.
At least that's what I understand, but I'm not a city attorney, and nor do I want to be one, so that's up to Sophie.
Are you guys taking action as a city at this meeting?
No, it's being run by the state. It's their meeting, it's the Regional Water Quality Control Board's public.
Are you simply listening?
Yes.
Well, they do invite questions, so that's why, I might have questions.
But it's, yeah, it's a, it's a public meeting to discuss CDCR, is what it is.
And you should be fine, just having the building open.
Yeah.
Thanks. Stacy?
We're closed, Dave, we can't talk.
I think, I think you got the wrong day. I understand it's the 14th, not the 15th.
It's the 14th.
I've got it on my calendar, hold on one second.
Okay, whatever.
Hold on, Dave.
Wrong calendar, too many calendars. So he said it was on the.
14th.
On the 14th. Okay, let's go to the, this calendar, and here it is. All right, it is.
It's on a Wednesday.
14th, he's correct. It's on Tuesday the 14th of December.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
We'd all shut up here on 15th.
Well, I guess I missed our Christmas party then.
Things can be, okay, so back to the adjournment of the regular council meeting.
There's a motion in a second.
Okay, do we need to take a vote on the adjournment of it? Okay, yes. I'm in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
Aye.
Being adjourned?
It's on the 14th, huh?
It is.
I hope the 14th conflict with the Planning Commission maybe?
Okay, well, we should, we've got some time to notice it or not notice it, but.
Michael, are you gonna be calling me back when we return into the special meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, the 14th.
I'll let you know, Jim, we may not have a quorum for the Planning Commission, that may be a different problem.